Sponsored by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, as everybody convenes. On the agenda, we have Bill Number 176-33 LS, which is relative to the classification of personnel vital to the protection of Guam's natural resources. Just for the information of the public, the notification in compliance with the open government law was disseminated on the fifteenth. The initial information or notification was disseminated on the fifteenth of September, and then the second notice that went out to our public, to the senators, and to our media partners and the stakeholders also was sent out subsequent to that on the seventeenth. We do have, like I mentioned, one particular measure on the agenda this afternoon. I'd like to recognize my colleagues who have joined us this afternoon. To my immediate right is Senator Rory Specchio, who is the chairman of the Department of Agriculture Oversight; to my immediate left is Senator Nerissa Underwood, and to her immediate left is Senator Dennis Rodriguez. As was mentioned earlier, we do have that one particular legislative measure that we will be entertaining. If I call your name and you would like to present either written or oral testimony, please join us in the front, okay? I noticed that in the past, there's been a number of our people in the audience who have signed up in just to express their support or their opposition to a measure, but did not want to already testify, so I will extend that courtesy to you. So before I identify the sponsor of the legislation, I'd like to invite, obviously, the director, Mr. Massa Blon, Ms. Jane Deha, and Joe Moffas, who has already made himself, provided his own personal accommodations, and he's already at the table, and then Mr. Michael Rages.
They're just overexcited.
Mr. Director, before I recognize you, I'd like to yield to the sponsor of Bill Number 176-33, Senator Dennis Rodriguez. Senator?
Hafaday, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to everybody. Bill 176 is very similar to a provision that we have included in the fiscal year 2015 Budget Act, which we are operating on this year, up to the end of this month. And what it does is allocate a certain amount, in this case, 367,238, which is an amount that was provided by the Department of Agriculture, and which is the allocation to ensure the salaries and benefits of the eight forestry aid officers and three conservation officers are set aside and maintained for fiscal year 2016. For this fiscal year, we did that during floor discussion during the budget session. And so we had that, we put that in in response, again, to the Department Agriculture's request to ensure we do that, right? Because I understand that these individuals were on a limited-term appointments, and so we wanted to make sure that the service they provide to the public is not interrupted, and so that was made during that budget session. We were also told and assured during that time that after that was incorporated, the department now would initiate the process of permanizing these individuals into these positions. However, we understand that that hasn't happened, I think maybe for the past two years, maybe, and that hasn't happened. And we're afraid, concerned that now that, again, we are in this situation where the department has not acted on permanizing these positions, and so what this bill calls for is, number one, to ensure that the service of protecting our Guam's natural resources are not interrupted, and hopefully, if we can get this on before the start of the fiscal year, then we can be assured of that. But also, the second aspect of this is ensuring that now we permanize these individuals who have been occupying these positions for, I believe, two years, two or even three years, maybe, right? So that's what this measure does, Mr. Chairman, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. And the first individual I'd like to identify is the director, Mr. Sablon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Buenas en Hafaday, Senator Specchio Oversight Committee for Agriculture, Senator Frank Augen Jr., for introducing this bill, and also to Senator Rodriguez. Senator Underwood, thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Matthew Longereau Sablon, Director of the Guam Department of Agriculture, and along with my deputy director, Mr. Jesse B. Palikan, and the rest of the employees of the department, we are thankful for the opportunity given today to testify in support of Bill 176-33. We would like to express our appreciation to Senator Dennis Rodriguez, Senator Rory Specchio, Senator Frank Augen Jr. for sponsoring and introducing this bill, which would classify competitive limited-term appointments for three conservation recruit positions and up to eight forestry aid positions with no interruption, in service which is vital to enforcing Guam's laws and regulations for the protection of fish, wildlife, endangered and threatened species, and forestry laws. The department's Conservation Law Enforcement Section, along with the Forestry and Soil Resource Division, is in dire need in classifying these trained and experienced employees to effectively continue the protection of our island of Guam's natural resources. In closing, we humbly ask the members of the 33rd Guam Legislature for your favorable consideration in the passage of Bill 176-33. Thank you, Mrs. Matson.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Sablon. Ms. Deha, if you can please identify yourself for the record and proceed.
Jane Deha, Resource Information and Education Officer within the Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources at the Guam Department of Agriculture. Hafaday, Senators, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm a campaign manager for a marine preserve campaign called PD Pride to Puguen White, and some of the outcomes of that was having the community do a pre-op post-survey where they identified threats to the natural resource management of the PD Bombholes Preserve. And so one of the recommendations from the public and the community was an increase in enforcement, and they felt that out of all the activities, that would be something they would need. And so in support of that, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Sport Fish Restoration Grant afforded us to move forward with the program, and also a nonprofit organization from the states called RARE funded a lot of the activities for this campaign, as well as the University of Guam Sea Grant. And so there was a lot of investment for this program, which needed the support of law enforcement. We could not have done this campaign without law enforcement, and the success of the campaign is a hotline that was developed, so there was a greater increase in communication with the public and the community to our law enforcement. They had an increase in patrols. The funding sources were able to give them much-needed repairs for equipment so they can continue those patrols. And so going forward, the conservation recruits have had training, and we were almost able to give them more training if they were classified employees. So the nonprofit organization had it as one of their requirements, to give them more funding for different training, but because they weren't classified, we had to table that for another time. So in closing, it was really important that we had law enforcement numbers, that we needed an increase in force, and having a break in that kind of service with, you know, with the budget not being approved, you know, it would impact the community's perception of the support, because we went forward with the campaign, saying that law enforcement would be there. And so it is really important for us. And also, going forward, we're extending to Tumon Bay, and we need more presence. And so, you know, reducing the numbers would really impact the beginning of this other Tumon campaign. So, you know, I just think, you know, I'm grateful for their efforts, because not only that, they were able to give us a lot of needed data, and the data they collected between three years, they're able to do better management practices, and also, it's a good tool to give back to our community and say what they have been doing. And so I really am in favor for this opportunity for them to have the continued service, as well as our forestry aides, because we do a ridge-to-reef approach to conservation, and their support really impacts our efforts for fisheries management. And so, you know, we really do need all of these manpowers in our agency and service. But thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Ms. Deha, for your testimony this afternoon. Mr. Moffas?
Hafaday, Senator Augen, Chairman Augen, Senator Rodriguez, Senator Underwood, and Natural Resources Chair Senator Specchio. Hafaday, and thank you. My name is Joe Moffas. I'm the chief of the Forestry Division at the Department of Agriculture, and I want to thank you guys today for having us here to testify on Bill 176-33, an act to add a new item five to subsection zero, section one, chapter five of Public Law 3366, relative to the classification of personnel vital to the protection of our Guam natural resources. Obviously, I'm here today to testify in support of this bill. In 2008, the U.S. Farm Bill was passed requiring all state forestry agencies to develop and implement a statewide assessment and resource strategy plan, now known as our State Action Plan, or Forest Action Plan. And this was to be implemented in 2010. This plan identified six priority issues we are facing here in Guam. One is wildland fire and public safety, water quality and water supply, population growth and urbanization, deforestation of native forests, urban forest sustainability, and degraded lands. It also identified at the time of the report our program capacity of six forestry aid and future forestry, future program needs of at least 16 additional forestry aid personnel and cooperative fire program manager to adequately implement our State Action Plan. Since the plan was written, we have lost our administrative support and one forestry aid, bringing our forestry aid at that time to six. But today, I'm happy to report that we finally recruited our administrative assistant, and with, like what Senator Rodriguez said earlier in that bill in 2015, the eight forestry aid positions. So we've finally got these guys on board, which is the topic of discussion for today's hearing, and along with conservation recruits. To implement our action plan, we have four core programs that is supported through funding by the U.S. Forest Service. These are, one, our Forest Storage Program, which we provide technical assistance and trees free of charge to landowners, farmers, ranchers, and land trust recipients to assist them in mitigating conservation issues, such as providing trees to address windbreaks, soil erosion, and agroforestry practices. We have provided thousands of trees to numerous cooperators throughout the years in collaboration with USDA Natural Resource Conservation Office to support their environmental quality incentive program equipped, a program that's available to our local farmers and ranchers. We have a large project coming up this October in Marisa, the Manel Gais watershed. In that area, wildland fires, wildland fire, soil erosion, and flooding impact the residents in this area. This past dry season, there was a large fire that went through that area, and I had a chance to speak to one of the residents there, and he told me that he had to evacuate his house because his daughter had asthma, and because of the smoke, he had to evacuate his home. The work that we're proposing to be conducted down in this area is to plant about 2,000 acacia seedlings in our efforts to address the wildland fires, the soil erosion, the flooding that's occurring down in that area. So in the future, these families will not have to evacuate their homes because of the fires. Fires are reoccurring in that area just about every year. In our forest health programs, you know, we've got the rhino beetles, we've got the little fire ants, and the Asian scat scales. What more can I say about these issues? The movement and importation of food, building supplies, and everything else under the suns, we are at risk of impacting our native forests and farm production. We see the damage the rhino beetles have done to our coconut trees. The Asian scat scale has decimated centuries-old scats or fadeng in the wild, and the little fire ant is and will be problematic in the future. If not adequately addressed, farmers, hikers, nature lovers, and our tourists will be impacted. To address these issues, we have collaborated with numerous local and federal agencies to get support from the Forest Service to fund the CRB program, little fire ant program, the Asian scat scale research, and more recently, the Guam Plant Extinction Prevention Program. That's multiple, but as the name suggests, we are trying to prevent the extinction of our native and indigenous trees. In our urban community forestry program, this program provides technical, financial, training, education, and outreach services to local, federal, and nonprofit organizations in the form of providing trees for green spaces in the urban landscapes, training on tree-climbing and pruning, tree hazard assessments, and tree harvest certification. We have coordinated with our federal counterparts to bring out these trains for our local partners, utility agencies, Department of Parks and Recreation, DPW, GPA, and the University of Guam, so they can have the knowledge and skills to better care for their trees in their respective areas, so we can enjoy the benefits of trees in the urban landscapes, which makes the areas cooler, improves air quality, reduces stormwater runoff, increases land value, reduces noise pollution, and supports our tourism industry, and it just makes us come out and enjoy nature. You know, I have many people coming into my, and organizations coming into my office requesting for support and guidance on proper care, maintenance, and pruning of trees, expressing safety concerns for large trees, because as you know, in recent years, in the urban landscape, we have been, trees in the urban landscapes have impacted our lives in a very traumatic way, damaging property and infrastructure and even lives. Far too many times, I've been asked to allow for the total removal of large trees because of the fear that it may cause harm. The reality is, if we simply take proper care of these trees, we do not need to sacrifice these large trees. These trees are an integral part of our community and our tourism industry, so we need to continue to incorporate them into the landscapes so we can continue to provide, and so we will continue to provide training opportunities to our partner agencies, so these trees in the urban landscapes will be safer and for all to enjoy. In our cooperative fire program, yes, we do have a small firefighting unit. During the dry seasons, wildland fires are almost a daily occurrence. This past dry season, we only had five personnel responding to fires. There are times where staff did not show up for duty due to illness or other reasons, exposing our personnel to greater risk. Recognizing this shortfall, and through our cooperative fire program with the Forest Service, we established an MOU with Guam Fire Department to collaborate in our suppression efforts. This allowed us to leverage federal assets via our federal excess personal property program, which provided GFD with needed firefighting equipment and tools necessary to respond not only to wildland fires, but to other emergency calls as well. Currently, GFD has on their inventory three pumper trucks, one water tender, and five forestry fire trucks. We have also provided GFD with numerous fire hoses and furnitures for their use in their fire stations. I provided you with a letter from then-fire chief John Saldas on our partnership with GFD outlining our support and how they benefited from this support. So if ever there's an emergency, you see GFD responding with our forestry trucks, just know that we are part of that process in keeping the public safe. And by the way, my staff are certified wildland firefighters, but are not under the law enforcement compensation plan. And as we know, we have two distinct seasons on Guam, right? We've got the dry season, we've got rainy season. Each present challenges in managing our natural resources. During the dry season, fires run rampant throughout the island, destroying our native vegetation and exposing soils. In a rainy season, because there are no vegetation to capture rainwater in their branches and leaves, water works its way downstream unmitigated, causing flooding, damaging property and infrastructure. Exposed soils are transported to our river streams, eventually into our coastal and marine preserves. We have seen in recent months the closure of the Ugan Treatment Plant due to hydability. So we are out there proactively conducting reforestation work in the urban landscape and in the rural landscapes to mitigate these problems. This October, we're celebrating Arbor Month, and we invite all of you guys to attend, please. And we have planned a number of events throughout the island with the kickoff event in October 13th at Epo Beach, and two others in the Marisa and Manel Gais areas, as I referenced earlier in my testimony. In the installation of trees in strategic areas, we have an opportunity to address the soil erosion, flooding, and fires that are constant occurrence throughout the island. Our federal counterparts, the Forest Service, is very supportive of the work we are doing and the local partnerships we have formed, and are committed to our programs by providing funding and technical support in the form of training on tree care and maintenance, invasive species identification, and wildland fire suppression. When these trainings become available, we do open up these opportunities to our partner agencies as appropriate. These are just a small example of the work, collaboration, and partnerships that we address, that we do to address the issues that are affecting our people and our natural resources. There are still more to do, and we have an opportunity to continue to expand this work, but we need your support, and this could be realized by the passing of this bill. The individuals affected are good, hard-working men, and are truly dedicated to our mission and mandates. When these guys come into work, they always have a smile on their face and are excited to go out and execute the work they do. Sometimes I wonder what's wrong with these guys? You know, they go out, they're exposed to the elements, walking up and down rough and uneven terrains from the southern mountain range to the city bay valley. These are the extreme conditions they're exposed to, and still come to work with enthusiasm and dedication to get the job done. In my 30 years of working in this government, this is probably the second time I've worked with a group of people that are all on the same page with one another, and they get along well with one another, and I hope to continue to do so moving forward. And in closing, I hope I convey the importance of the work that these men do every day in support of our community as it relates to public safety and the protection and enhancement of our natural resource. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moffas, for your testimony this afternoon. Mr. Rages?
Buenas en Hafaday, Committee Chairperson, Senator Rory Specchio for Agriculture, Chairperson, Senator Frank Augen for Public Safety, distinguished Senators Underwood and Senator Rodriguez. I am Conservation Officer Mike Rages. I am currently the supervisor for the Law Enforcement Section, and I am here to offer testimony in support of Bill 176-33. As a law enforcement supervisor, one of my greatest challenges is manpower availability, ensuring that there are adequate amounts of conservation officers in the field to carry out our enforcement efforts. The loss of these three limited-term conservation officers recruits come September 30th of 2015 would severely impact my patrol operations and leaving five full-time conservation officers to actually enforce the natural resources for the territory. The department, as well as the section, has invested hundreds of hours training these officers, or limited-term officers, to become fully functional officers. They have made numerous arrests for fish and game violations, investigated complaints, responded to calls from the public regarding violations. They are a valuable asset to the section as well as the department, and I cannot afford to lose them come September 30th of 2015. In closing, I am in support of the bill's intent, which continues the service of these three limited-term appointees without disruption in service and to admit them into the classified service of the government of Guam. I make myself available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rages. And because we do have your ASO here, we'll go ahead and ask the Senators if they have any follow-on questions, but thank you very much for your testimony this afternoon. Senator Rodriguez?
Just a quick statement in regards to how this process can proceed forward, because I do understand that, I mean, we all understand that we're still maybe a week, week and a half out from the conclusion of this fiscal year. Now, it's very timely if, in fact, the legislature is able to go into session and address this before the end of the fiscal year. But like was done previously, if, in fact, it breaks into the next FY, then we certainly will push to try to expedite our consideration by the legislative body. The intent here behind expediting this public hearing, Mr. Director, and to everyone who's here, is to ensure that not only do we bring this issue to the forefront, we recognize it, but that you also understand that the legislature is behind all of our employees who are presently in these positions. The commitment was made last year when then-Senator Rodriguez had introduced similar legislation, and it was added into the budget to allow for the carryover of these individuals in the limited-term capacity. I guess my one question would be, as we allow this additional extension for another year, can we get perhaps some level of commitment from you, Mr. Director, if it's not too much to ask, having, perhaps not having approached the front office? But I'd like to see these individuals classified, made permanent, because that was the intent last year. And right now, a full year has turned, turned full circle. You have not been in that position the entire fiscal year, so we'd like to see if by any chance we can get some level of commitment that the legislature will allow this limited-term continuation of our conservation officers and the additional personnel, and that at least on your end, you'll be able to try to work with the front office to see what you can do to get them classified and permanized, because we heard about the requirement, you also shared with us about the requirement in terms of enforcing the natural resources laws.
Right. Yes, Senator, and I do appreciate, you know, the introduction of this bill. Yes, with this bill to carry them over uninterrupted service and not to repeat previous, what happened previously. Again, we appreciate your efforts on this, and yes, I am committed, as a director, to make sure they are classified. I've been working closely with my ASO, Ms. Antonia Santos, and we're going to work diligently on this and also communicate with you Senators and the front office. So everybody's going to be on the same sheet as we go along. We will give you updates.
Okay.
And again, thank you for this opportunity, and my goal is not to repeat. It's a challenge every fiscal year. What do we, where do we go? Where do we get the funds? Is there a budget cut? So I do not want to repeat this. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say that because they are already occupying these positions, the funding is already there, and the legislature, barring any major financial crisis, has yet to terminate employees. So I mean, you can almost be assured that going into the next FY and then subsequent fiscal years, that the funding for these particular positions will continue to remain there, and we just need to have you work with the front office to see what you can do to expedite this. But your commitment is very much appreciated, Mr. Director. There's only so much you can do, but you have the commitment, at least from this end, on behalf of myself and the sponsors of the legislation, and I'm sure Senator Underwood would concur, that in this case, allowing these individuals to continue on uninterrupted into the next fiscal year, I think, is critical, and then giving you that opportunity to be able to classify them.
Right, right, and with a budget that's appropriate, it's actually a two-phase, not to, no interruption of service, and in the meantime, put that classification in place. So all the figure here is incorporated in the two phases.
Thank you very much, Mr. Director. Senator Specchio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you dismiss this panel and go on to the next, I wanted to state for the record, particularly to the individuals who stand to have this period of uncertainty become certain if this bill passes and signed into law, that the director, the new director, has been very committed to seeing this particular issue resolved. I can't thank the governor enough for appointing you, Director Sablon, to be at Agriculture, and you've been there well after the budget was submitted for the upcoming fiscal year, but you did bring this to our attention, and I want to recognize also yourself and Senator Rodriguez for having this bill before us. I think the difference between this bill and what Senator Rodriguez was able to do in the last budget cycle was you, in the last budget cycle, through his efforts, we were able to continue them on an LTA basis. This bill is different, because they would automatically go from LTA to classified, and we talked about that, and we agreed as Senators, legislature, that doing something like this should not be done in the budget process, only because it's very different from what was done last time. If we're going to continue the status quo, that's one thing, but this bill will do far better, and this is what Senator Rodriguez is trying to do, which is why he introduced the bill, we co-sponsored, and we're having a public hearing right now to discuss the merits. I want to also point out that come October 1st, they will be able, right, Director, to continue in a limited-term capacity. Funding will still be there, and then should this bill pass, I think Speaker's going to call us in the session mid-October, should this bill pass and the governor signs into law, then certainly, as Senator Rodriguez points out in this bill, that the eight forestry aid aides and the three conservation officers will just, you'll have a seamless transition.
That's correct, Senator. What we plan to do is we can get them from limited term to limited term, and then while during that process, we're going to be working with BBMR to see how we can classify them but not terminating them.
But I wanted to point that out, Tony, so, Ms. Tony, so the individuals here know why it wasn't really imperative or time-sensitive that this be entertained in the budget process. You know, the budget process contains whole sorts of issues that identifies the governor's priorities, the legislature's priorities, and to put something like this in a budget bill might have just made it harder for this thing to go forward, and so I appreciate also Senator Rodriguez recognizing that it's better we do it outside the Budget Act, so they can have a fair shake at this initiative that Senator's trying to propose.
That's right.
Just so you know, because it was mentioned that come October 1st... Just so you know, because it was mentioned that come October 1st, you'll lose these individuals.
Correct.
Just to make it perfectly clear, come October 1st, you will not lose these individuals. They would remain LTA, and then through the efforts here in the legislature, everything could be applied retroactively. Chief, are you okay with that explanation?
Yes, I just got one other question, if you don't mind. On the verbiage, it says up to eight forestry position. Is there, what was the rationale? Instead of just saying, just eight positions?
Up to eight, because in that particular case, there were, well, there are eight individuals in that position. We wanted to ensure that it highlighted that and it recognized that. But, I mean, we could change the verbiage. That's a concern that was brought to our attention by the Director a couple days back, that perhaps we should just highlight eight conservation positions. But initially, the information that was disseminated to us was that number.
Just to eliminate any form of interpretation on that issue?
But and also, if the thing is enacted and there's only six incumbents, then that's probably why Senator Rodriguez put up to eight. But it's not less than eight, it's not more than eight, it's...
That's right.
Because if the time comes and there's only six warm bodies, then someone might say, oh, wait a minute, we cannot implement this, because it says eight, but there's only six.
I see, I see.
Yeah, so I...
So you have that flexibility?
Thank you.
I just want to close by thanking you, Mr. Chairman, and Senator Rodriguez, and Senator Underwood, and others that have been involved in this process, and to just underscore the Director's commitment, and just so that it's not misunderstood, that when you leave here today, come October 1st, that you would still be in the same limited-term capacity, but that should this bill be passed and signed into law, everything will be seamless. And this bill, we would still need to provide the funding at some point in the fiscal year. Just, I know that, I also want to make it clear that an additional $367,000 from your existing budget doesn't mean you have an extra $367,000.
No, that's right.
But in the...
Within the Department's budget.
Yeah, but you would have a shortfall. But I just, in Senator Rodriguez's forethinking, you know, getting the authorization is 99.9% of the battle, and the Governor will always be able to step forward and use his transfer authority, and that's where the Director's strength comes in. And the Governor also saying that he believes that his revenue estimates are going to be higher than what the legislature adopted, and when that time comes, there would be an opportunity for supplemental budget, and the authorization is here, and the funding will just flow. So it's kind of like a multi-pronged approach to making their period of uncertainty more certain, so they can finally be classified and take advantage of the training amount that you talked about. So just want to let everybody know what the game plan is and what the goal is, and that there's no misunderstandings. And I appreciate you saying that, we don't have $367,000. What, but you understand too what the next 12 months are going to have to be like. Yeah, in order for these individuals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Spish. And just to add to those comments to all of you who are impacted by this piece of legislation, you know, just understand the nature of the conversation is that, in fact, you continue your employment with the Government of Guam uninterrupted come October 1st, and then we'll work with the Director through Senator Rodriguez's legislation to be able to work on classifying all of you. So that's the intent behind this particular measure. So, Mr. Director, and to everyone, thank you very much for your testimonies afternoon. I'd like to invite the following individuals: Mr. Mark Augen, Rolan Kirigwa, Belle Soliva, and Chris Castro, please. Okay, okay. If I can also invite the following individuals: Gage Santos and Daniel Anderson. Okay, gentlemen, if you can identify yourself for the record and then proceed with your testimony. We'll start with Mr. Augen.
Buenos Aires, I'm Sergeant Mark Augen. I'm the Operations Sergeant for the Law Enforcement Section. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to consider our position within the Department of Agriculture. Right now, we are in dire straits. Dire straits, and I mean really bad, in regards to enforcement and responding to the public's needs and protecting our natural resources. As you can see right here, I have two of the LTAs in front right here, and one of my senior guys. The rest have other commitments right now. One cannot be here, because his wife had surgery. The other one has to go run and take care of his daughter, because the wife works. What am I left with? This is a problem that's been happening for a long time, and it needs to be addressed. I don't want to go back and rehash what my boss has already explained to you, but I will tell you this. Since we brought these guys on board, since the time that they actually started working, they've actually already accumulated 16 cases regarding violations to Guam law. The most current one, and this is the one I'm so far most proud of, we actually apprehended criminal, career criminals in this last one. One happens to be a pedophile. One happens to be an illegal arms dealer slash bomb maker. And then another one is a beyond-control criminal. We do not just do natural resource. We are out there to protect the public as well. Our hours of operation is none other than the same of everybody else. We work the Gaga hours, per se. And we're the ones that go out there and we look at these parks and look for these people that attack people that are trying to do exercise or get, you know, just take the time on their personal time to be away. All of a sudden, they have a perpetrator on them. We are the guys in the shadows. That's how we work. But I'm losing ground. I too am in the position to retire. So is my boss. Where is the experience, the guy that's going to take over and train these guys when we're gone? Basically, we're putting them in harm's way, because they have no leadership, senior leadership, because of this problem. It's been happening for a long time. So I'm really grateful that you took the time today to hear us and heed the call, that we need guys desperately, and we're not just three. We need more. We need more guys. The last guys that I have left that are 24 years, never got promoted. Where's the fairness in that? Where's the fairness? You need to go home and sleep on that. These guys are, I don't know how, we're still here. I moved up once in 24 years. Our classmates, Guam Police Department guys that I graduated with, moved three or four times. So why? Why are we not treated equal? We don't understand that. But today's fight is for these guys to stay on, so that Guam's natural resources are protected. We work with forestry. We are arson investigators for the forestry. We have 17 core mandates. We do everything. We don't have a criminals section. We don't have an investigative section. We don't have an evidence processing section. We do it all. We don't go home until the whole process is done. And that wearing lie is where the government loses. You give us so little people to work with, you pay overtime. Why? Give me more guys that can work three shifts, and we would cut that down drastically, cover more area. In closing, I will tell you this, that you're not working alone. We found a way to help ourselves. Okay, right now, we have a CEA, a Cooperative Enforcement Agreement with no law enforcement. We found a way to get us the equipment we need. So we're asking you to meet us halfway. We're in the LSO program, the Law Enforcement Surface Supply, down at Big Navy. We're in that too. We just got approved. So we're trying to fix ourselves, but meet us halfway. Now you need to help us, give us numbers. Help us keep these guys, and then move forward and give us just a little bit more. And then don't forget, my colleagues, the two guys. 24 years of dedicated service, and not once did they get promoted. So please, look at that, Senator, and fix that problem. That's a shame. I'll be ashamed to know that. You know, you won't sleep good tonight, knowing that. How did this government serve it, work 24 years and never get promoted? And he earned it, through training, education, and experience. So please, today, all I'm going to ask now is, consider this bill, fight for it. I know you have more votes to gain. Work hard to get it, and help the other guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Augen, for your testimonies afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, I don't think you're going to mind, but if we can move to the young lady, the far right.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Belle Soliva. I'm one of the foresters. I am here to support, and I am almost to retire as well. And I am not prepared to say anything, but my boss, Mr. Mafnas, did say anything that we want to be here this afternoon. And those people in the front, they're our forestry aide under the LTA position, and we would want them to continue working in the Forestry Division of the Department of Agriculture, because their services is very important. They are the people that go to the jungle, collect seeds, especially our native species, start the propagation, and provide it to the landowners. So without these people, we don't have siblings to give away free of charge under the federal grants. So we really need their services and to be permanent, because they also have family to feed and everything like us. So we really need their services. And as I said, I am retiring soon, so we want them to be, to take care of the Forestry Division and the needs of the landowners that is doing good in our environment or protection of our natural resources in this island. Not only protection, but to beautify as well, because that's very important for the tourists that we are here enjoying in our islands. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Soliva, for your testimonies afternoon. Gentlemen, please identify yourself for the record.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Gage Michael Ferran Santos. I am a competitive limited-term appointment Conservation Officer recruit from the Department of Agriculture, and I am here today in support of Bill 176-33. I first heard about this position, the LTA position, back in January 2013 by a fellow psycho-mate of mine from the Criminal Justice Academy from GCC. She was actually one of the first LTAs here at the Department of Agriculture for the Conservation Section. So she told me in 2013 that they have openings for the position, the LTA position. So I went and I applied for it. I wasn't picked up until 2014, April, was when I was picked up after applying for the job, and she was no longer here. She left the LTA position to pursue a permanent of Guam position at a DOC. So she's now a DOC guard. And we still keep in touch from time to time, but just the process of waiting to get hired here, you know, from hearing it in January 2013, and finally coming aboard in April 2014, you know, so that was a waiting process. So one of my concerns was, before you clarified that we're working through October 1st, one of my concerns was if that didn't happen and you would announce the position in October 1st, come October 1st, for a classified, a permanent position, that we would have to reapply, and then how long would we wait until we were selected or, you know, had to do the written test, physical test, then the interview, and then when would we come aboard? So that was one of my concerns, but you guys can clarify that for me. You know, we're, the government has invested a lot of time and money in us, and we're here for the long haul, you know. Just give us the opportunity. We, you know, we have a passion for the job already, being here for a year and five months. We love it. And, you know, we're here to preserve our land and our ocean for future generations to enjoy, like our kids when we do have, you know, our grandkids, you know, everybody's family's here. So we're here to protect that. And another thing is, a lot of the older guys, the senior guys are, they're on their way out, you know, retirement. They have a lot of knowledge that we can gain from them. Without their guidance, you know, we cannot be, you know, we'll be struggling out there. There's a few guys in the military as well. They're, they get called for deployments and to serve our country, and then you're left with the two guys that are not, you know, in the military. If, you know, we didn't have a position, so we're here and we want to work. Also, the manpower out there, we've come across big groups, big fishing groups, you know, they're armed, they have knives, they have spear guns. And then the poaching community, you know, of course, they're armed with shotguns, crossbows, handguns, assault rifles. And, you know, these groups, there's up to like maybe four of them, maybe more. And you have two, three officers responding to that call without any backup, so, you know, that's an issue too, officer safety. Never done this before, so, you know, it's my first time. But yeah, I'm in support of the bill, and thank you for the support, everybody. And, yeah, I'm here for the long haul.
Thank you very much, Mr. Santos.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Daniel Anderson. I'm currently an LTA for Conservation Section. The guys pretty much already explained the crisis we're in and the importance of our natural resources. And I just want to, I just want to say that I'm young, and I don't have kids right now, but when I do have kids, I want them to see the, I want them to be able to fish, and where there is fish. I want them to be able to see how beautiful the island is, and without, without those conservation recruits and the forestry aides, that won't happen, because of the fact that you got the watershed, and you got these illegal fishing in the preserves. Without the preserves, fish have nowhere to go and reproduce. So that's a really important thing. And like Officer Santos said, it's my first time too, so I'm nervous, but I'm doing my best. So since I've started here, we've worked hard to get to where we're at right now. I was fresh out of high school, I joined the academy. Instead of hanging out with my friends, having fun, you know, I wanted to work hard, because I wanted to be in law enforcement. I wanted to protect the public. And when I joined the academy, my two top choices were customs and conservation. I happened to get lucky and get one of them, so. Natural resources is really important to me, as well as the island, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, for your testimony. Mr. Castro?
Good afternoon, Senators. Officer Castro, Conservation. For the past few weeks, I've been working with, at least with the three LTAs that we have for Conservation, and they've been sitting on pins and needles, and I could only imagine the forestry aide. And I'd just like to thank you for the support for these individuals, because without the clarification that Senator Spish just gave, a lot of them are stressing out. I mean, I've seen one of them, like, they could not even think on a daily basis, losing sleep, losing weight. I mean, seeing that from a person and as a colleague, you know, it concerns me. And now that you've given them that hope, you know, it's really inspiring, and I thank you for that. You know, I like to keep things simple, but these three individuals that I work with, Officer Rios, Officer Anderson, Officer Santos, they busted their butts off for the time that they were working here. I mean, we ran them through the wringer. They even did officer survival course through the water, and that's something that I wouldn't want to repeat myself. So, you know, I mean, like, if we're going to keep them, that's absolutely great. Because if we were to retrain new folks, I don't think that they have the fortitude that these three individuals showed. And I'd just like to express my gratitude and thank you.
Thank you, Officer Castro, Officer Anderson, Officer Santos, and Officer Augen, and Ms. Soliva. Thank you for your testimony. You pulled the mic, did you want...
Yes, sir. I just want to say one more thing before I get up here. Not only did you hear coming from their hearts, you know, nothing rehearsed, we asked them to come if they wanted to, give them the opportunity to fight for themselves. At the same time, we will promise to come up here too and fight for them. But the other thing I want to address to this committee too is, not only is it about this situation here, what you leave me with if this... this situation here, what you leave me with if this does not happen, overloaded work, workforce of five guys for the whole island, there's just no way. Then what is it going to say? We have communities out there that will stand up and say, "We're not doing our job. Bring it to you, another headache, go around." That's happening already, so we're trying to stop that process. We need these guys and more, we do, seriously. The time we spent training them, the money that we spent training them, the response to the community, like Ms. Diaz said, we get calls all the time. As soon as I parked my car in the garage last night, I got a call on my cellphone, my personal phone, which I give out as a response, and requesting for CO to go down to Mariso their net fishing, which is illegal. Where am I going to, I'm so ashamed to call their wives and say, "Can I get Gage?" It's just too much. We need help. So I don't know how much more I have to tell you. So please, think about this, fix it, and then help us some more. It's not, it's not yet over. Sorry to say, it's just not over yet.
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, I just want to say that the existing authority to allow
you to continue as an LTA was through Senator Rodriguez's current law. What he's proposing here is better than what we were thinking about with the director and the ASO. So you have the existing authority, and if this thing goes through, it'll put you in a better position. And I wanted to clarify that and underscore that and make sure come October 1st that none of you are going to be going to the governor's office or going to any of our offices asking what happened. You heard the director and the ASO saying that from now until this bill passes and hopefully becomes law, nothing should change. Right, Director? Okay. And what Senator Rodriguez is proposing is far better than what we ever talked about, right, Director? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much again, gentlemen. And just to reiterate, you know, this is the second time we're going through this entire process of extending the limited term positions into the next FY. So you already have the commitment of 75% of the members of the legislative body by virtue of that action last year. And I say 75% because we have four wonderful new colleagues who joined the 33rd Guam Legislature, and you have one to my immediate left. And I don't envision any concerns with regards to passing this legislation, allowing the director to continue to retain his resources and allowing these men to continue to contribute to the community through their efforts. What we'd like to do is if, Mr. Director, two things. One is, first of all, thank you very much for allowing your people to be able to testify. I think that speaks volumes about your leadership within the department, allowing your respective employees to be able to testify on legislation that could impact them or could impact their divisions or their sections. So thank you very much on that note. Secondly, is, Mr. Director, there's a side issue that was just mentioned by Officer Uggan, and I don't want it to leave this public hearing without being recognized. If by any chance you can work with the chairman or myself or any of the senators, Senator Rodriguez or Senator Underwood or any of the senators in the legislature, so that we can work on that promotional structure that you need in the law enforcement. Because really, 24 years, an individual not being merited, and I literally say merited with a promotional opportunity within 24 years, you know, that says something about what we need to do to visit the structure that you have for your law enforcement division. Yeah. Okay? So we will work with you, and please, we need your cooperation and the support of the front office. And thank you for recognizing that, Mr. Director. Thank you, gentlemen, and Ms. Soliva, thank you very much for your testimony. If I can invite now Mr. Roland Kidigwa, Ms. Angelita Minjola, Senator Hope Cristobal, and Nathan Rios. Once again, Roland Kidigwa, Angelita Minjola, Senator Hope Cristobal, Nathan Rios, and Enrique Salas, please. If you don't want to testify, it's okay. At least you signed in, and just signify and let me know if in fact you did not want to testify. Okay? If Mr. Salas is not going to join us, and I'd like to invite Sean Diaz. If Sean is in the audience? You're good? Okay. Okay. Bruno Cases? You're good? Okay. And is it Rudy? Bobby? Rudy? Okay. But we do have you noted, so thank you very much, gentlemen, for signing in. Just let me call one other individual, Albert Lohan? You're good? Okay. Paul Cabana? And then Shane Munya? Okay. Thank you very much for signing in, gentlemen, and signifying that in fact you support this particular measure. And we can yield to Ms. Minjola.
Sidos Massey, Niasinaputinadat, Palabimfan Matupagubimfan testify. Thank you. Half a day, my name is Angelita Minjola, and I'm the chairperson of the Guam Southern Soil and Water Conservation District. And I hereby submit this testimony in support of Bill 176-33, which is to appreciate the legislature's acknowledgement and support of the importance of Guam's natural resources. As it stands now, the Soil/Water Conservation District is always working closely with various agencies such as Department of Education, University of Guam, the Mayor's Council, the Department of Agriculture, EPA, NRCS, FSA, and many others as well as with the legislature itself, on a host of many projects in pursuit of finding the balance between development and protection of all of our island natural resources for our future generation. With going into all the details of the readily apparent cultural and economic importance of our natural resources, I'm here today to voice my support of any measure to further strengthen the capabilities of our government and people to protect those vital resources. As you can imagine, we have strong ties and partners with forestry in the conservation and preservation of our island natural resources. We have been working together with other partners to help address the Ugam watershed problem by planting native trees on the ridges upstream. Together with students from Simon Sanchez, we have been surveyed the Atati area in Inorran to identify native trees and to assess the soil erosion caused by pharaoh angulet. These students had real field experience to identify various native trees, collected seeds, and planted them at the forestry nursery. With this, we plan to help prevent soil erosion. Hopefully, the plants will help regulate water flow as well as help filter the water going downstream. These are the kinds of community efforts that we naturally improve water quality feeding our Ugam watershed, so that Inorran will have clean water and water during rainy season. This is just a single example of the work we do. The work needed to protect our forests is overwhelming. Not only do they have challenges from pharaoh angulet, inconsiderate destruction of forests to make way for urbanization, typhoon, and most especially the burning of trees by arsonists who think they are hunters are just a few of the challenges forestry faces to protect and preserve our natural resources. Forestry also participates in education outreach activities sponsored by the other partners. Favorable support to staff the forestry division and of course, the aquatic division. As called for in Bill 176-33, it's important and necessary to provide further support to continue, for continuity of work being done to help protect our natural resources God's regalo to us. After all, our trees provide the oxygen we need to survive, provide the food for our people, and are the literal beauty of our beautiful island. We can't live without our forests. Your favorable support is a mark of your legacy to protect and preserve our natural resources for the livelihood of our people. Thank you, honorable senators, for this opportunity to provide this testimony in support of Bill 176-33. And I'm really inspired by the aquatic limited term employees, and so the forestry limited term employees. They have dedicated so much of their time and their passion to help our island protect our natural resources for this generation and future generation. And I'm happy to state that, I mean, that Director Sablan and Deputy Director Pelican are doing a great job. We have been really communicating and planning, planning a lot of activities to revisit. So I'm really, really happy, and your support fuels my passion to continue working for the protection of our natural resources. Thank you very much, and I applaud you for taking your time to pay attention to the needs of the agriculture limited term people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Minjola. Senator Cristobal?
How you to my boss, the chairman of my board. Sidos Massey, Mr. Chairman, half a day, all members of the committee. Senator Rodriguez, thank you for introducing the bill and sponsors, including Senator Underwood, who's here really in support, I'm sure. I am Hope Alvarez Cristobal, former senator for your august body. I am currently an elected board member of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation District. I'm here to testify in support of Bill 176-33 LS, an act to add a new item five to subsection O of section one, chapter five of public law 33-66, relative to the classification of personnel vital to the protection of Guam's natural resources. This bill obviously aims to make permanent the indicated positions at the government of Guam's Department of Agriculture Align Agency within the forestry division. In order to fulfill its mandate, especially its obligations within the forestry division, the Department of Agriculture must realize the full support of the legislature in funding and creating these permanent positions in order to build capacity within the department. As a partner, the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation Board works in consonance of the Department of Agriculture in soil and water stewardship and conservation, which includes outreach efforts in the community. In particular, the forestry division reports to our board, or have been reporting to our board, about their work in forestry conservation and protection that in turn supports the creation of more productive and sustainable agricultural lands on island. As you know, much of the care of our island environment has to do with the work done by the forestry division. And to demonstrate all the myriad of work and the difficulty of work involved with this division, we need to recognize that forests provide buffer zones for non-point source pollution, they reduce erosion, they also protect aquatic environments, and they enhance wildlife and biodiversity in our small island ecosystem. And with the increased intensity and number of storms due to climate change becoming more common, and the landscape changes caused by unnatural increase of our island's population with housing developers eyeing forests and potential agricultural lands for their bulldozers, the increase in subdivisions, roads, parking areas, especially in the northern part of Guam where many of our agricultural products are grown on farms and ranches, and with the US military coveting pristine forest areas and lands for themselves, the forestry division will no doubt be playing a major role in addressing the greater work of conservation and preservation of our island's natural resources. As a member of the Northern Guam Soil and Water Conservation Board, I fully support the work of the Department of Agriculture and in particular, the forestry division. We have been lately laying the groundwork on a collaborative project to restore and revitalize a former buffer or fragment forest to its original state by doing, by planning conservation work which will enhance the quality of our soil and water. Of direct value to residents will be the aesthetic pleasure of having a forest in an urban setting and open space for the enjoyment of our own island residents. This is but one tiny project that requires the support of forestry division with properly funded staff, something that can happen with your support for this bill. I thank you for seeing the forests from the trees and voting for this bill. Sidos Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator Cristobal. And Mr. Kidigwa, thank you for allowing the ladies to provide their testimony this evening.
I've learned. My name is Roland Kidigwa, and I'm with the University of Guam Cooperative Extension Service as well as the Northern Soil and Water Conservation District. Chairman and senators, for us, I'd like to just say that I'm here to testify on the need to enhance the Department of Agriculture. I have seen a number of threats to our natural resources. Many of you know me for the work that I'm doing with the rhinobial, and that all stemmed from the Department of Agriculture lacking the resources to do their mandates. And so we, as partners, have come together to help augment them. And now at a time where the Department of Agriculture is coming up from the ashes, is not the time to pull the rug from beneath them. I can tell you that I have worked with the Division of Forestry for a number of years. And whenever there is a project that the Department of Agriculture, not only the forestry division, but also the conservation unit, work together in order to build up, to protect, to grow these plants, but some, once you put them in the ground, it's not the time to turn them away. That's when, once you plant the seed, that's the beginning, and that's where the conservation officers come in. Now, need I remind you that we have been experiencing storms on an average of about once every 30 days? We're in a El Niño year. And these guys from Department of Forestry have gone out there and they have planted trees to protect the shorelines, to ensure shoreline resiliency. And even when those storms have washed them away, they come back and they do it again. Because, it's not because it's their job, but it's because we cannot afford to lose any of that precious soil. And even more, it is that trees there that's protecting the marine environment that everyone so values. So what I'd like to ask you is to support this and to think of the conservation officers and the forestry aides in a holistic sense of part of the solution to protecting our natural resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kidigwa. Nate?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, hello, senators. I am here today, I am a conservation, I'm a limited term conservation officer recruit, Nathan Rios. I am one of them that's affected with this bill. Such a challenge coming up with this, but I, I just became speechless with everything right now. Pretty much, everything has been said what I wanted to say. And all I could do is just thank everybody that's here for the support that you guys are giving us for Bill 176-33. Senator Rodriguez, I really want to thank you very much for helping us. And I am one of the oldest of the three that are here in our cycle, and I understand that this is a very, very pertinent thing for us. This is our career. And I thank you very much for helping us and seeking, you know, there's nothing else I could say about it. I mean, I'm so, I'm so happy to see everybody here to support, especially our two, my two supervisors, who only testified, testified twice in front of this body. And I thank them very much for supporting us, and I thank you. And like I said, there's, there's nothing else I could say. I mean, we've seen everybody's testimony, heard everyone's testimony, and right now I'm just, I cannot say anything anymore. But I just want to thank you very much for it.
Thank you very much, Officer Rios. Thank you very much, folks, for your testimony this afternoon. Yes, Ms. Minjola?
If we could ask the temporary employees to please stand up so we can give them a round of applause for being patient and soaking all the knowledge to protect our environment.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Minjola and Mr. Director, and to all of your personnel that came out, and also the addition of Representative Senator Cristobal, thank you very much for providing your testimony. And it's good to see, it's really heartwarming to see that in fact, your personnel- in fact, your personnel are given that flexibility to provide testimony through this legislative process. So I once again recognize that. And gentlemen, thank you very much for coming out and advocating for this particular legislation. We'll see what we can do to get it reported out as quickly as possible and then allow the legislative process to proceed. But I want to thank Senator Rodriguez for the introduction of the legislation and working with the Director, and also Mr. Director for working with your oversight chair over the Department of Agriculture. Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.